Please join us, the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, well, good evening, everyone. We are, we were hoping Stephanie would be joining by Zoom, but we don't see her yet, so I'm hoping she'll come in. It's seven o'clock, the hour is upon us. We have a disclaimer that I need to read in accordance with Governor Sununu's emergency order number 12, pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. Information and connection links to the meeting are provided on the town of Plymouth's website, So we have this evening joining us via Zoom is our member, David Kent. Dave, are you, are you unmuted?
I'm unmuted.
Okay, great. So David Kent is here, Patrice Scott is here, Tom McLaughlin.
Here.
Here, Butch Cushing.
Here.
Here, and we are still awaiting for Stephanie. We expect to join via Zoom, okay? All right, has, well Butch, we have, Dave, have you had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from the last? And I would say since, and Tom wasn't present, so we have three people that if I would entertain a motion to adopt it unless anybody has any corrections?
I'll electronically make that move.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, Dave, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the minutes are approved. Seconded, approved, all right. And we are here this evening for a, two public hearings. The first one is case number 108-106, a special exception request from Article 4, Section 409, accessory building or use to allow an 11-foot encroachment into the setback area. This was continued from our last meeting, and we have Mr. Russell present with us, and we would ask Mr. Russell if he'd like to come forward and tell us what he's requested.
I already have on site. Situated properly because it happened while I was away from home. My surprise.
Okay.
An eight-by-10, very attractive shed that I would like to use for proximate use to my home and driveway, snow clearing equipment and firewood. That's really all. I may put, yeah, basically, that's all. And I've spoken with my most relevant neighbor, and he's okay with actually me getting two feet from his property, but I want to plant some obscuring plants to make the place look nicer to him. So I said to him I would petition to have it placed four feet from his property. It gives me plenty of room for, you know, decorating it so it looks better to him, and he was happy. He was happy with that. He had a concern about drainage, you know, whether, and I told him that what we're doing in the driveway is going to do nothing but improve his drainage. Contractor assures me that's the case. It wasn't a drainage issue anyway. It won't be really having any impact on the town, you know, in terms of a appearance or safety from, near, by the road or anything like that. I'm going to situate it sort of halfway down my driveway, which is a small driveway, and getting it away from the driveway will allow me to have the place plowed properly. That's really my interest in doing. I could have put it right on the driveway, but then it's going to be, it's a small driveway. And I think it'll be attractive. I don't think the town will be offended by it at all. I don't see it as having any adverse effects on the town. I hope you folks would agree with that. And unless there's something else you feel like you'd like me to add, I think that's all I need to suggest.
Does anyone have any questions? Tom?
You're not going to rent it out, are you?
No, it's eight-by-10. Maybe, I could to a goat if I lived further in the woods, but that's about it.
What's the immediate neighbor? I had a list.
I, I forget his last name.
Yeah, we had it in the last.
It's on the list.
Your neighbors were here at the last meeting. And.
He was here at the last meeting, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Russell, could you tell, I don't, I don't know if our member, Mr. Kent, heard that in the beginning that you said that you were ill at the last meeting?
I wasn't able to make the.
Yeah, he wasn't able to make it because he was ill and in the hospital. So that's why we, we didn't know why you hadn't come, but we just continued.
Yeah, I couldn't communicate with you, I'm sorry.
Is this the neighbor on the screen?
Pardon?
Is this in the butter on the screen?
Um, no, this is not the butter. This is for, he is for the next special exception. But last time, Tom, we had the neighbors show up. They, apparently they're from Rye and they were visiting.
From Rye, New Hampshire, and they come up from time to time, their.
Right.
Their daughter.
This is the neighbor, the developer on the corner there.
Right on the corner.
Their daughter and future son-in-law live in the place. They're very, very good neighbors, and I'm a very good neighbor to them.
You mentioned that, that got set where it was right now because.
Right, it was supposed to be delivered from two to four from Vermont. And it didn't come, so I figured, well, they're not coming. So I left town, came back at eight o'clock, and there they were depositing it, not where I wanted it. I wanted it right on the driveway so it would be beyond the setback, so whatever. And I, I corresponded with somebody from the board here, telling them that that had happened, apologizing for it.
What's just going to be up on blocks or what?
Excuse me?
It's going to be up on blocks?
It's, it's up on a, not cedar, some kind of wood supports.
Oh, so they dig them into the ground?
No, it doesn't go into the ground.
It doesn't go, even sets all above the ground. Is that like a structure or what?
Right, it's just like a little.
Large, it's a shed.
Yeah, it's a shed.
And I'm, I'm going to make the space between the shed and the ground lower because my contractor's going to sort of put it into the driveway a little bit, and then I'll cover it with riprap around the sides, so it'll look very pleasant.
And you're going to, what kind, you're going to put shrubs around it?
I am.
For the neighbors? I know that.
Because they, they said, you know, what about the way it looks to us? And I said, that's fine, I'll make sure it looks nice to them.
Right, right, they, that's all they expressed. They wanted to make sure that it's.
I'm going to put some arborvitae and vines and stuff like that. It'll be very pleasant, yeah.
Okay.
And their concern too was also that there wouldn't be any future construction along that line.
No, nothing. I don't plan anything else.
Okay, all right. Yes, Dave?
It's, it's the minimum distance to the road, isn't it? Could it not be further away from the road?
Well, if it were, it would impede my getting back to, beside my garage to my backyard, which is necessary. And it's really not very, I haven't measured the distance, but it's not very close to the road. I mean, where it sits right now, one could say so, but not where it's going to be. It's going to be another 10 feet over.
Did you hear that, Mr. Kent? It's going to be another 10 feet over.
From where it is right at the moment.
Over which way?
Away from the road.
Away from the road.
Okay, and I, I would support this if we had as a condition, maybe screening.
Right, I.
Right, and we're, we're doing.
That's a good idea.
Screening?
Well.
I'm not sure I understand you, sir.
You mean the greenery as green with the neighbor, right?
Right, I'm intending.
That's what the neighbor was most concerned about.
Sure, and I had assured him that that would be the case.
Right, I, I think that's appropriate.
I don't object to bringing it up, but he, he knows that I've assured him that that's to be the case.
We've, just so the applicant will know, this continues after he's through with the property and moves on. That requirement.
Fine. I mean, it's going to be permanent planting, so, you know, I'm an arborvitae starts out this tall, but it gets to about 12 feet, so it'll be a very substantial screening for that building.
Okay, all right. I will open the public hearing.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Yeah, sure, thank you. And I ask if there's anybody present who would like to speak in favor of the application? Or say anything neutral? Or if anybody's opposed? And I would say for the record, we have not received any opposition. The staff has received no opposition, and we did have at the initial hearing, the neighbors, and they had no opposition. They just wanted to make sure there would be screening. So I think seeing nobody in the audience willing, who wants to speak one way or the other, I will close the public hearing. And now with the board, we can make some finding of fact.
Well, it looks pretty good there.
Okay, so lot size is 1.119 acres. Placement of shed.
Yeah, I'm probably going, what was the dimensions of the shed again?
Eight-by-10.
Eight-by-10.
Where's the, yeah, how about shed? Shed is eight-by-10 feet. And placement will be.
Four feet.
Approximately 10 feet from, further from the road.
That works.
Yeah, from right now.
Anybody who's driven by and seen.
Yes.
I measured, I measured from the sidewalk, the inner edge of the sidewalk to the building right now. That was, that was 30 feet, so.
Be another approximately.
More sense to say 40 feet from the sidewalk.
Okay, so why don't.
Estimate, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be, want to be held to that because I'd want to measure it too, but you're, you're right.
It should be just a greater than 30 feet from the sidewalk.
Okay, is that, Butch, what do you think?
I didn't hear what he had to say.
Tom, Tom thinks greater than 30 feet from sidewalk.
I wouldn't agree with that.
No, you, you say greater than.
Okay, Mr. Russell, hold on. Mr. Russell, we need to talk about this now, okay? Yeah, it's okay.
I thought he wanted the response.
Right, no, this is the deliberation part where the board has to figure it out. We have to hash it out, so. Mr. Kent, you think it should be 40 feet? You think it should be 30 feet?
I was quite pleased when he said he was going to move in an additional 10 feet.
Right.
And that would make it 30 feet from the edge of the sidewalk.
What do you think, Butch?
Good with me, 40 feet.
Okay.
He's willing to commit, that's right.
Okay, well, and we understand that's, if we make that a condition, that has to happen, okay?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think where it is placed right now, I did notice too, it's, it's kind of close to the sidewalk.
It's not where I want it.
Yeah, okay, well, that, we, that's good to ascertain, so I think that we can make that as a condition, and if there's any problem with that, I think maybe just need to communicate with us about that, okay?
Okay, the house is having other improvements done. The house is.
Right, other improvements, other improvements are ongoing.
Under renovation.
Major, major renovation.
Yeah, other major.
I would say some major.
Yeah, improvements are underway.
We put a swimming pool over that side or?
No, I thought about it, but I said, eh, I'm not home enough to merit.
Patrice, I object to having people speak during this period of the meeting.
Okay, okay.
I baited him on that.
Right, that's okay, all right. Well, let's, let's get through the facts, and also we want to have a condition about screenery will be provided as agreed with neighbors. Screening will be planted as agreed with neighbors, with the butters. Okay. There will be.
Neighbors were concerned maybe about the drainage.
Right, there will be no impact on drainage?
I have two, Patrice.
Okay.
The first is, I think the, the greenery should grow to a height of the building.
It should.
You think that it, that's feasible? Okay, I'm sorry, I have to say I'm not very aware of all the different kinds of greenery, so it, Mr. Russell said that's, it should grow that high.
Should grow, well, that should be part of the condition. The second, I'd like to add a fact, I'd like to add a fact as well.
Okay. Um.
You have another one, Dave?
Hold on, yeah, let's, let's go through the facts first, okay? And the conditions so far, we have two, and we'll go over those at the end, okay? But let's get through the facts. Finding, the lot is one acre, 1.119 acres. Placement of shed, the shed is eight-by-10, placement will be approximately 40, approximately 40 feet from sidewalk line. Sidewalk, what do you call that, boundary or line?
Yeah, sidewalk, it's a.
Interedge of the sidewalk.
Okay, other major improvements are underway. Screening, okay, this is a condition.
No, can I add a fact, please?
Okay.
The neighbor's house is on the far side of their lot.
Neighbor's house is on far side of applicant's lot.
No, it's on the far side of their lot, of the neighbor's lot.
The neighbor's lot.
Right, you mean the wood, the woodshed?
No, not talking about the woodshed.
Okay.
The widest part of their lot is between the applicant's yard and their house, the neighbor's house. Their house sits on the far side, the neighbor's house sits on the far side of their lot.
Okay.
So there's an extra-large setback on the other side of the line.
Okay.
Which is, you know, if their house was at the minimum, then there could be a concern, but it isn't. It's on the far side of their lot.
Okay, so neighbor's house is on far side of.
Their lot.
Of their lot, okay, of their lot, I see. All right. Okay, what else? And shed will be placed approximately four feet from property line? Okay.
Patrice, I might as well add, within the setback area.
Yeah, within the setback.
That's the reason why we need to do this.
Right. But I'm, I'm just saying that's in the application, not any, any farther into the setback. Okay, all right, I think that's good. Now the conditions, we have two conditions. And one is about the screening. Screening will be planted as agreed by butters.
And be allowed to grow to the height of a building.
And be allowed to grow to height of shed. Okay, and the other one is there will be no impact on drainage, or that's a fact, that's a fact.
Does that include a 40-foot, or it'll be built 40-foot from the sidewalk?
Yeah, that was the other one, yeah.
Okay, so that, that's one of our conditions.
Okay, that's a condition.
Yeah.
Okay, the placement, that's a condition. The fact part is the placement of shed, or the shed is eight-by-10. But the placement will be approximately 40 feet from sidewalk, that's a condition. Okay, so we have two conditions listed in the other facts.
Conditions, Patrice?
The two conditions are the place.
Can we talk about them, please?
Oh, sure.
I've got, I have difficulty with saying it's by agreement of the neighbors because 10 years from now, we have different people who don't remember anything, and a planner will not be able to enforce the condition based on something that isn't on paper. So I would, you delineate what, what the screening is going to be. Then a future code enforcement officer would be able to enforce it.
Okay, so we have screening will be planted, oh, just not as agreed by a butter. Screening will be planted and allowed to grow to height of building, height of shed?
Block the visibility from the neighbor's yard.
Yeah.
Okay, to height of shed, block, blocking or?
Blocking visibility from the neighbor's yard.
Okay. From a butter, yeah, a butter's yard. Okay, all right, I think we got that.
I'm good.
All right, so you're good with the other, the other one, okay? All right, then, if these are the facts, I would entertain a motion, or wait a minute, sorry, we have to go through our criteria.
Don't you make a motion to accept the finding of facts? You don't do that anymore?
I don't think we do that. We, I think we just make our findings. I mean, I can, we can move, move to accept the findings and condition. Or I think we do that with the actual motion. Okay, okay, number one, the proposed use shall be only those allowed in the ordinance by special exception.
True.
Okay. Butch?
True.
True, all right, and that we can cite Article 4, Section 409. The specific site is an appropriate location and of adequate size for the use. Tom?
True.
True?
True.
Dave? Okay, true. Number three, the use is developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located. Tom?
That's true.
True?
True.
Based on the conditions, I believe it's true.
Right, especially due to the conditions placed. Number four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
True.
True?
True.
True, all right, unanimous? Got it. The use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities. Tom?
True.
True?
True.
True.
Okay, and we have one more. There would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
True?
True.
True.
True, okay.
Motion, we approve the application?
Okay. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, second by Butch. All in favor?
Time out. I'd like, I'd like him to say with the conditions.
Oh, yeah.
Good idea.
Motion to approve.
With conditions.
With conditions. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Butch and Tom, okay. All right, it is approved with your conditions, okay, and we thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, you too, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, for coming, and I'm glad you were able to make it this evening.
My ass, so am I.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
All right, good luck. Thank you. Thank you, well. All right, now we have, where's my agenda? We have the second case. Which is a request for a special exception from Article 4, Section 409, accessory building or use to allow an eight-foot encroachment in the setback area. Request is by owner occupant Matt Hinkley of Loon Lake Road to erect a 22-foot-by-8-foot sunroom and living space in the setback area. A special exception is required per Article 4, Section 409. And the property is in the agricultural zone, that can be one of our facts. Okay, and we understand we have a representative of Mr. Hinkley here?
Yeah, well, Matt's on the.
Right, and there's Matt.
The contractor that's doing all the other renovations.
He'll have to come up here, so the.
Already been approved on the property.
And what is your name?
Joshua Furbish.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Furbish, would you like to tell us what you are intending to do here?
Yeah, so we, the building is already there. It's a garage with living space above, and that living space is what we've been remodeling. It's already existing. But we would like to put in a sliding door at the front going out into an eight-by-20-long sunroom, which should be just all windows, no heat, no heater, anything like that. And the building is at the 30-foot setback currently. So we need to go into that setback by that eight feet that I just mentioned.
Okay.
And it's not on the ground. It's no foundation or anything. It's, it's coming off the second floor.
Oh, okay.
Over the garage door that goes in, so there'll be a beam that'll span that whole length so that they can still use the garage.
Setbacks off from the main road, right? The road that goes by, this will be on the front of the house.
Yeah, wait, you want to?
So, yeah, I was going to.
Picture bag up. So their main house is on the lake, and then across the street is another structure that's been there.
This is the wrong application, sorry, I gotta go to the.
It's a.
It's the last one.
Yeah. Right, so they're on the lake.
Wait a minute.
Four. And we're across the street.
I gotta share the screen, sorry, so everybody can see it.
Yeah, there you go, that's perfect. There's actually more, it's 30 feet from the, the drain, the ditch, not even the road, but I know that's, that's how they count it.
Yeah.
So it's actually even further from the road, but so that's what we're asking to have permission to build.
Okay.
So that path that's going out will be the path that approaches on the.
Yeah, can I walk up to this?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is here already.
Yeah.
And that's what we propose to build. So this building is at 30, we're going to go eight feet more, which would bring it to 22.
Okay.
That's in the air, right?
In the air.
Pretty much in the air, except for the, what was we supporting?
Yeah, it's just two big columns.
Yeah.
Beam.
Yeah.
And the rest is just up in the air.
So you, the house across, this is same ownership, the house across the street?
Yes.
But they're two separate lots, right?
Is it? I don't think so.
You know, divided by the highway, the road.
That is.
Highway, hardly, huh? But, so you're, you're pumping up to that septic system?
Yeah, that's, no, they're putting in a. They already have permission to put in a septic here in Alachia. They've already got that approved.
Well, so it's going to be on an independent system?
Yes. They just share, they share, they're sharing the, well, the Artesian.
Sure.
But it's going to have its own septic.
So is that, that is all one lot? That's all one lot, and the road passed through it?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it a private road?
No, I don't think so. Not the section they're on, no.
I can, I can answer that if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Please.
So it is all one parcel, it's one lot. It was a private road at one point, and our neighbors actually put the road in and got it approved through the town because the town decided to start plowing it, and so it is now a, a town road. It is maintained by the town.
In, in general, it's two lots when it's separated by a town road.
Right, and, and, but it was grandfathered in back in the day because it is not set as two, I pay, you know, we pay taxes on the one lot. And as our lot size is based off of that one lot.
Well, we won't tell anybody you're getting away with murder. Where is the lake?
Do you see it? Can you see the picture?
I do.
Over here. You see the number, where three is? That's the.
Oh, I didn't get this, so that's at the, so the other, the home lot has frontage on the law, on the lake, huh?
Yeah, this is across the street.
And that's like across the street.
So the, if I can ask a question, the pitch downhill to the lake, obviously, is it not?
Yes.
So you're not going to block anybody's view with what you're doing here?
No, I mean, even if it wasn't pitched, there's no, there's no one else around to block a view. It's all, like, everything around them is woods, pretty much, and another cottage on the would be left side. Yeah, so, I mean, this is, if you saw, it's so small, like, it's not even, it wouldn't impede anybody.
I have one more question. I couldn't quite understand the, does, does the top of the greenhouse, as you're calling it, extend above the pitch of the roof?
No.
The gay.
No, this, so the existing building actually is three. There's the garage, then there's the living space, then there's an attic. We're, we're just in the central, the middle section, living space, and it's going to have a shed roof coming down, and so it doesn't even go up to the existing roof line of the other building.
Okay, fine.
Can anybody think? Can anybody think of any other questions?
I'm just curious, I'm curious, this doesn't have much to, when did we take that over as a road, do you know? When did we take that, decide to take that as a road? Town to decide to take, to maintain it? You know when that was, by any chance?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
I, I, we've only been here for three, this is our third year here. But the neighbors have been here for 50-plus years. And they talk about how they, you know, came in and talked to the town, and town would never come down past a certain point, and more and more people were starting to, you know, come up for their summer camps, and they worked with the town years and years ago. I mean, it was probably 30 or 40 years ago now.
Okay, I just couldn't remember.
Okay, does anyone have any, any other questions? Hey Josh, why don't we let you sit down and I'll open the public hearing?
Okay, thank you.
And see if there's anybody who would like to support this application? Or anybody who has any neutral comments? Or would like to oppose? I see nobody present in the audience, and we have had no opposition, no receipt of any letters of opposition or anything, and all of the butters were notified, so. All right, I will close the public hearing. And ask the members, would you like to discuss or just make findings of fact?
No neighbors showed up.
No neighbors?
No objection.
Yeah, no neighbors, no neighbors opposed. Opposed application. Okay.
Point nine seven acres between two pieces.
What is point nine seven acres, how about divided by road?
There you go. Public road.
Divided by public road.
It's a lakefront lot.
Property is lakefront, well, should we say homestead? Homestead property is lakefront?
Garage is already the, it's being added on to an existing building.
Right, so proposed renovation is to existing garage, which is already 30 feet, did you say?
Yeah, we
Which is already in the in the setback. Is to existing garage, which is already in setback.
No, I don't think he is in the setback.
Oh, I thought he was.
With the building, the regular, the, that's why he's looking for a
The addition is going to be in the setback.
The addition is, yeah, the building, the existing building isn't in the setback.
Okay, it's not the existing, okay, sorry, I got that wrong. Proposed renovation is to existing garage.
And the existing garage has a living unit in it.
Yeah, existing garage, sorry?
Has a living unit in it.
To existing garage, which has, which already contains a living unit. Okay.
Patrice?
Yes?
I believe in the agricultural zone, is this not a substandard lot? Non-conforming?
That I don't know off the top of my head, Dave. I know it's in the ag zone. Isn't it because of, is it an acre in the
That's not quite an acre, and it should be an acre.
Yeah, so it, it's a substandard lot in the, in the ag zone.
Pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Pre-existing non-conforming lot in the ag zone. Very wooded area.
Nice real rural area.
Yeah, very wooded area with, would you say few, few people around, few other
Yeah.
We want to say something like we're not
There's not that rural, we've got the, you know, there's a couple of hundred by hundred lots right around it.
Very wooded area with few other living, I don't want to say that, just very wooded area, okay. What else is important here? It's the extension will be in the setback. All right. Okay, I'd like to add the footprint will not be expanded, maybe.
Oh, yeah, but it is being expanded, but
But the footprint isn't, right, just the, the top. Is that, so that's not correct, Dave?
That's not correct.
Okay, all right, then don't put it to me, the footprint is the bottom, but
Yeah, you're talking about the foundation.
Yeah, I'm talking about the bottom of it, but
I think if you get, you
Yeah, okay, we don't need that.
Yep.
Just extension only would be in the setback.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else people think we need? Okay. Then why don't we go through the criteria? Number one, the proposed use shall be only those allowed in the ordinance by special exception, we'll start with Tom.
True.
True?
True.
True, okay, and that again is Article Four, Section 409. And number two, the specific site is an appropriate location and of adequate size for the use.
True.
True?
True.
Okay, Dave. Number three, the use is developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True.
I find that true?
True.
You agree, Dave?
I do, yes.
True, okay. Number four, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
True.
True?
True.
Okay, true. And the use will not place excessive or undue burden on town services and facilities?
True.
True?
True.
True, okay. Number six, there would be no significant effect resulting from such use upon the public health, safety and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
True?
True.
No.
Okay. All right, then I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
Butch, have a second?
Tom, yep.
Tom, okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, granted, special exception. Okay, and thank you very much, thank you for coming this evening, Mr. Hinkley, and good luck with your project.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
All right, now let's see if we have any, let's see, we have our two public hearings done, other business. I understood, did Tom want to ask something?
I wanted to bring up the subject under other business, but I don't know what the election's going on, nobody, I, I think that the junkyards in this town, I think, are an issue. Nobody's discussing, and I feel sorry for the butters. And somebody has to represent them, and I think that we should be, we should be looking into this, or ask the selectmen to look into it.
Okay, I think, I, I know junkyards in general can be a real problem, but I it's not, you know, it's not for the zoning board to consider, but I think it would be good if you wanted to bring it up to the selectmen, and then when we get a new code enforcement officer, that's definitely
I don't want to bring it up to the selectmen. I don't want to bring it up to the selectmen unless the board wants to, unless they want to take a vote and see if they want to. We wanted to ask about that, and I, I think we need some time to be
Right, okay, so why don't we think about that, Dave, do you have an opinion? It's something we should think about?
I think what Tom is calling junkyards are automobile repair places with a lot of dead bodies around, which make them under the statute junkyards. But I don't believe it licenses junkyards, I don't know that as a fact.
Right.
And they shouldn't be existing the way they are, and there's like three big ones now, aren't there, Tom?
Yes, and that, that, this, one of them goes way back to when I was on this board 20 years ago, and it would have never it never went right, and, but at some point, you know, a duck should be a duck, and we don't have to get in whether it's a mallet or anything else, I mean, there are eyesores in the neighborhood, and the butters don't have a chance, there's no place for them, there's nothing for them to do. They don't want to put a complaint in about their own neighbor, that's fine, and so
My concern is that when there could be environmental problems that result from
Big problem.
And if it gets, if it gets out of hand, the people just walk away and the town will have to wind up picking it up.
Kelly's, which was a big junkyard.
All right, well, I definitely think it's a, you know, it's an issue, it's not something that our board would really handle because we're, we don't have a matter in controversy before us, so, and I think we have to be careful about that. But I think it's definitely something we should think about, what, you know, what's the proper way to discuss it or bring it up. I might personally, off the top of my head, I would say it's a code enforcement officer issue, and right now we're in transit, you know, transitioning, and I, I would hope that's something that when we get a new code enforcement officer, they could look at something like that. But, and I don't think it's inappropriate for any zoning board member to bring up a concern that we have to anybody, you know, whether it's a selectman or
Okay, thank you, that's good.
Okay. Yes?
Could we, could we consider just sending a note to the selectmen saying a complaint was lodged about the number of junkyards in the town, and we don't see it's our purview to deal with it, but we hope that someone will?
Okay, I mean, do you want me to write that letter, write an email to the selectmen or to the attention of?
Yeah, the selectmen probably.
Do we all agree on that? Can we make a motion like that and say, yeah, why don't you write a note to the board?
Right, okay. Okay. So there are multiple, I'm just not aware, so multiple junkyards or multiple properties?
Used as junkyards.
Yeah.
There's a state
As de facto junkyards.
Well, there's a state statute that defines junkyards, and these places definitely meet that criteria.
Right, then, so they're not licensed, probably.
May I just make a
Julia?
Additional comment? Mr. Kent is right, but they also meet the, the definition of used car or car repair lots. And that's been sort of the, the gray area. Because these cars do have a turnaround time, and they are slowly, but, but I agree that
Okay, so it's, it's an issue, and we can ask for our selectmen to direct
Second question. Doesn't the, does the average house come with a, with a driveway? By virtue of the way it was sold before? I mean, can cars just park all over the road, all over the yards, and nothing we can do?
Again, it's a code enforcement issue, Tom, I know, I know.
Tom, we, last year when a guy came in from the corner of Pleasant and Langdon and wanted to extend the driveway, and we said no because it was gonna be a violation. He said, well, I want to stop the kids from parking all over the yard. Well, that's his problem, that wasn't our problem.
Yeah.
No, what, what is it, Dave? It's a parking lot.
Well, I know, buildings get approved
It's against the zoning ordinance to park in the grass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well, I think those are Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I think we'll write an email to the selectmen, okay, and then we'll consider what So I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, at eight, is it 7:45, sorry?
Second.
Second, Butch, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and thank you, everyone, thanks for coming.